Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to the City of Portsmouth Planning Commission Work Session. Today, Tuesday, July 7th, 2020, held in the Microsoft Team Platform via video conference. Please note, this meeting will be recorded. Commissioners are asked to mute their microphones when they're not speaking and to verbally identify yourself prior to making any comments. Additionally, after each session is presented, I will call each Commissioner by name to allow you to ask questions or make comments. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, this is Regina Jackson, Planning Administrative Assistant. I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present and can hear me by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Thompson?
Present.
Commissioner Youngblood? Commissioner Thaxton? Commissioner Ricks? Commissioner G?
Present.
Commissioner Coleman?
Present.
Four members of the Planning Commission are present. This public meeting of the Planning Commission Work Session is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Northram's March to 12th, 2020 Executive Order. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of the COVID-19, a quorum of the Commission is not physically present in the meeting location, but members have joined remotely. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to encourage to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the city's Planning Department website, with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will be recorded and feature public comment, even if members of the public do not provide comment. Participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this work session, Planning Commission is reconvening by video conference via Microsoft Team App, as posted on the city's website, identifying how the public may join. Announcements of any future meetings and conferences. Note that our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, August the 4th at 12:30 PM. The work session will be held in the Microsoft Teams Platform via video conference. Our first work session item is Bike and Pedestrian Plan, and our presenter is Carl Jackson.
All right, thank you, Regina.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm sharing my screen now. All right, can everybody see?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
All right, great. Well, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of Planning Commission. It's my pleasure to bring to you the Portsmouth Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. This is a culmination of about a year's worth of work of the Planning Department, our consultant at Ulta Planning and Design, and about a half dozen other city departments, and a fairly robust public engagement process. So today, are you all able to see the next screen?
No, I'm just on the, there we go, got it.
Okay, great. So for today, I'll talk about the plan overview, our public engagement process, the proposed network. And then I will look at, there are about five projects that we hope to implement from this plan overall. Whoops. So the vision statement for the Portsmouth Bicycle Pedestrian Plan is that the City of Portsmouth Plan will build upon efforts to create an active community where bicycling and walking are safe, healthy, and fun for all ages and abilities. And this, our goals for this plan included enhancing connectivity to create a positive economic impact, protect the environment, promote equity, enhance health, increase safety, and increase livability for the city. Now, as you know, Portsmouth is a centuries-old walkable city, primarily in our historic districts. But there are other parts of the city, even more suburban parts, you know, not so much so. So these parts of the city, we've done our best to provide, you know, bicycle pedestrian facilities, crosswalks, bicycle lanes, several pedestrian crossings. And we've done this several times throughout the years. And what we'd like to do with this plan is to actually create a greater vision and a purpose to many of these improvements. And as we worked with our consultants and staff to look at the existing network, we determined that there are approximately 354 miles of sidewalks within the city, two miles of existing multi-use paths, this is primarily the Portsmouth Seawall, and the path that's along Crawford Parkway downtown. The bicycle facilities include eight miles of shared roadways or sharerows, as you can see on High Street and Cedar Lane, seven miles of bike lanes, and about a mile and a half of wide shoulder on the West Norfolk Bridge. So as part of our public engagement process, we held three large public meetings. The first one was our kickoff meeting, which was in the spring of 2019. This is at the Churchland Library. We also had two committee meetings at Safety Town and at the Paradise Creek Park. We were able to establish Citizens Advisory Committee that played a crucial role in providing recommendations for this plan. We did several tabling events at the Sunset Thursdays, as well as the Seawall Art Show, where we were able to pass out a community survey. The survey was able to, we were able to get 327 responses to the survey, both online and in paper, which gave us some crucial recommendations for this plan. And we've also been able to provide regular updates to our elected officials here at the Planning Commission and to council. Now, in wake of the pandemic, of course, we've provided so many resources online and virtually. Of course, our project website, which has been available throughout the process, was also loaded with an interactive map showing the existing network and many of the proposed recommendations. We also held a virtual meeting on April. This basically was an explanation of the draft plan, and we're able to receive public comments via email. And this website is still up, portsonbikandpedplan.com. And that's something that, you know, commissioners and the public is welcome to look at. Now, the results of the plan, we decided to start prioritizing sidewalk construction and restoration throughout the city. All in all, we came up with about 208 miles of prioritized sidewalk, organized by one multimodal corridors. These are the arterials within the city, you know, such as High Street, Portsmouth Boulevard, Victory Boulevard, just to make sure that these arterials had sidewalks. Looked at our transit stops served by Hampton Roads Transit HRT to make sure that there are sidewalks going to and from the bus stops. Prioritize our recreation centers and education centers, schools, and parks throughout the city. And then as well as our regional connections, if you think about the Southampton Roads Trail, our portion of that trail is the Portsmouth Rail to Trail, as well as looking at connections to the Jordan Bridge and connections to other roadways and bridges leading in and out of the city. For our bikeway prioritization, one of the things that we discovered from the survey that we conducted is that although 60% of participants in the survey were interested in biking, they shared a concern about safety. And their highest preference was to use a shared use path. This is a, basically a facility that's separated from the road. It's a slightly larger sidewalk, can be 10 to 12 feet or more. And this is exactly what we're building with the rail to trail. But out of the 82 miles of proposed bikeways within the city, 45 miles of those bikeways will be shared use paths. And as far as prioritization of where the paths go, we did equity analysis, demand analysis, showing where people would be interested in biking. We looked at safety, you know, where we can reduce fatalities and incidents to cyclists, you know, and several other factors that played into the decision-making for these bikeways. And in addition to biking and walking, we decided to look into e-bikes, scooters, and other forms of shared mobility or micromobility. And we conducted a shared mobility analysis to determine where the best places would be for these new devices within the city. Originally, we had a mobility pilot program, which would have begun this spring, but due to the current conditions, we've pushed that to next year, perhaps. And just as we had considered with the mobility pilot, the greatest area of shared mobility would have been the downtown, old town areas, you can see with that larger circle. Some other areas, perhaps the midtown area along Frederick Boulevard, and then area around Victory Crossing near the Community College. And of course, we looked at potential barriers, making sure that we do have facilities and accommodations, ways of, you know, crossing busy intersections, sidewalks, and paths, bike lanes, and so forth, to make sure that those facilities have been provided in those areas where we'd like to implement shared mobility. Some of the other programs and policies that came out of this plan, Complete Streets, which is the idea that you design roadways for all users, whether they be walking, biking, driving, you know, pushing a stroller in the wheelchair, that you provide wide enough sidewalk, you know, and separation so that all users can feel safe. We have a policy that's within the plan to be implemented on a case-by-case basis as we, you know, start to improve our roads or widen our roads or look for other opportunities. Vision Zero is basically a regional effort and a statewide effort to reduce the amount of fatalities and crashes. And we're particularly looking at pedestrian fatalities and crashes. One of the impetus for this plan came from a pedestrian or a cyclist, actually, who was hurt along the Churchland Bridge. And so we want to make sure that we can reduce that to zero, you know, hopefully by 2040, 2045. Program recommendations, as you know, Portsmouth is a bronze-level bicycle and walk-friendly community. We'd like to perhaps push that up a notch, maybe get silver and work our way to gold, especially now that we have a plan that will hopefully be soon be adopted by council. Safe Routes to School Program, the Portsmouth Public Schools does have a Safe Routes to School Program Coordinator. And we'll be working with them to expand the program. And then education, safety, and encouragement. We've been working with the city's Health Department, and they were able to receive a Walkability Action Grant. And part of this grant, they will use it to, you know, create programs to educate the public, to produce a video, you know, that will be broadcast on the city website, the city channel, showing people how to use bike facilities, how to safely ride within the city. I will also be hosting bicycle rodeos to distribute helmets and other safety devices for cyclists. So as far as implementation, we've got five big projects. Not that these aren't the only projects, of course, some of the smaller projects, sidewalks and so forth, we'll be able to do over time. But some of the big projects that we like to push, looking at High Street. Once the new Churchland Bridge comes in, which will include a shared use path, we'd like to look at, well, where do you go next? To make sure that we have accommodations that will get you all the way through Churchland. Paradise Creek, making sure that we have a shared use path from the Jordan Bridge, bringing you into Paradise Creek, you know, and along Victory Boulevard. And then further, Victory Boulevard Pass, George Washington Highway, we'd like to, you know, create more accommodations. Right now, we have a county-level road where, you know, there are no sidewalks, no curb and gutter. Like to improve that. Once you get to Greenwood, you know, you have sidewalk and accommodation there. Portsmouth Boulevard, Alexander's Corner to the Portsmouth Sportsplex, which will be a recreation center. Like to make sure that there are sidewalks, but perhaps can we enhance this by adding a shared use path for cyclists? And then finally, on Lincoln Street, to make sure that we have sidewalk and cycle accommodations. We already have existing bike facilities that cross Lincoln on Elm and Des Moines. So we'd like to create kind of an east-west connection that would bring people to what's called Gosport Park, which is right behind the courthouse. And from there, you could take a shared use path that'll bring you to the downtown, to the Portsmouth Seawall. And let's see, I'm going to try this to see if I can get to the plan.
Carl, make sure you unshare the PowerPoint and then share the other document.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Carl. We're still seeing the PowerPoint.
Okay, well, my apologies. I guess I tried too much. But at the commission's pleasure, you all can go to our website, pull up the plan, check out the project sheets toward the end of the document, which have detailed maps and descriptions of each of these five projects. And these are the five priority projects that we'd like to pursue. But other than that, you know, I'm finished, and I'm welcome to take any questions.
Commissioners, this is Commissioner Williams. I will now call each of your names and provide an opportunity for questions and comments. I have none. Commissioner Thompson?
Are we, is part of the Paradise Creek to the Jordan Bridge cover Cedar Lane?
Paradise Creek to the Jordan Bridge, yes, that's in the plan. Now Cedar Lane, you're talking about Cedar Lane and Churchland?
Yes, between basically Churchland High School and the middle school down there, all the way over to High Street. There's bicycle lanes, but no sidewalks. Very dangerous to try to walk down that road.
Yeah, we have, you know, identified that, and we've placed it as one of our tiers for, you know, producing sidewalks because there are recreation and educational needs in that area. But for the current time, we do have the bike sharerows there, and we're going to work on some measures of, you know, improving traffic flow, traffic calming. Because at some point, you know, we will have that rail to trail, and we'd like to be able to provide that connection, as well as provide facilities on High Street to get across the Churchland Bridge.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, sir, thank you. Carl, I've noticed that downtown, we've got crosswalks that used to have signs saying, "You've got to stop for the pedestrians." And at least three of them have been torn up or knocked over by cars or something. They're laying there in the median. What I'm driving at is, what's your plan? You know, you've laid out a really good plan here, but I'm still concerned about safety and interaction with motorists, either by pedestrians or with bicyclists. Where do we stand with discussing this with the Police Department? Because they're the ones that would have to enforce the rules about, that are going to give safety to the pedestrians and to the bicycle riders. If there's no coordination with the Police Department on here, we've come up with a plan that sounds great, but might actually just end up getting some folks hurt.
All right, and I understand your concerns, sir. And yes, the Police Department was one of the half dozen departments that was part of our internal stakeholder committee to develop this plan. They are aware of our recommendations, and they have been, you know, very cooperative, you know, in the past with like our mayor's rides and, you know, other bike and pet oriented activities. So as we start to make these improvements, you know, we will keep them, you know, aware of what we're doing and ask them to assist us to make sure that these facilities and the cyclists and pedestrians are safe using them.
Good. Second thing is, between Paradise Creek and Jordan Bridge, are you envisioning a bike path that's separate from the roadway? Almost like a sidewalk, but maybe gravel or maybe even a sidewalk. What's your plan there?
Yes, well, the plan does call for a shared use path, which is kind of like a wide sidewalk, 10 to 12 feet wide. And we do currently have a replacement for the Paradise Creek Bridge, which on the neighborhood side, on the craddock side, will have a shared use path. And on the park side will have a sidewalk. And that bridge is currently in the design phase. But once that's done, we will add additional accommodations to make that connection with the Jordan Bridge.
Great, thank you, sir.
I don't believe Commissioner Thaxton has joined us, but if she is, I don't see her name there, so we'll move on. Commissioner G?
First, great job, great job on this, Carl. I did have a few questions. And looking at the full plan, what was our ultimate goal in developing this? And did we have a measurable goal? Like, what were we trying to achieve? Were we looking for a specific amount of increase or meeting the current demand?
Oh, that's a good question. Our goals are, you know, kind of, you know, more broad at this point, just to make, you know, the city more walkable and safe for people of all ages and abilities. But one metric we could look at is, you know, improving safety for cyclists and pedestrians, reducing, you know, crashes and, you know, fatalities, other incidents that happen. And then as well, we're trying to also look at what our neighbors are doing, you know, with Chesapeake and Norfolk. You know, they're, you know, constructing this Southampton Roads Trail, you know, they're providing, they both have bike plans, you know. And we want to make sure that Portsmouth isn't left out, and that we have a bike plan and that we are creating facilities, you know, to match what other cities are doing and for what our residents have asked for, too. You know, we've set up, you know, a citizens, you know, committee, advisory committee that'll make sure that these recommendations are implemented, you know, on a regular basis.
Okay, yeah, I think my real concern is, once we get to the point that we want to, we get to our goal, how can we say whether we achieved our goals or not? I think that's one of the key things we need to keep in mind as we're progressing this. Especially, I think things may have changed since we started this with COVID. And I've bought four bikes since lockdown started, just to get my family out of the house. So I think you might have a much larger fan base for this now. And I just want to make sure that we're able to meet their desires. And then the other part, and this goes to some of the notes I saw on the site and on the draft, is the government, public, and private interaction. I know COVID probably has affected this, but how do we foresee the private industry being involved in this, whether from the sponsorship side or just the champion side, yeah, champion side of this plan?
We might be able to do both, actually. You know, we do have, you know, two bicycle shops within Portsmouth, you know, Cycle Classics, and then there's the bike shop over Churchland. And we did try to reach out to them. We weren't successful this time, you know, but we're hoping that we can get them involved and, you know, they could. I agree with you that there's a huge interest in purchasing bicycles, and you can't find any at Walmart or online, you know. So I definitely think that getting the smaller businesses and turning people toward, you know, purchasing cycles from there and, you know, getting them involved in this would be a great idea. And that's something that I'll talk with the Citizens Advisory Committee to come up with strategies for how we can get the private sector. We did also hold stakeholder interviews, and we talked with some of these civic leagues, including the Old Town Business Association. And I got their feedback on the plan well, and they definitely support it. And so we'll continue to do that, sir.
Commissioner Coleman?
Hi, Carl. Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. I did have a question, Carl. What about right-of-way? Do you or do you have any right-of-way, or did you identify that any would be needed for the path?
We limited the plan to just existing city right-of-way. If we do need to purchase right-of-way, such as what we did for rail to trail, we will apply for a grant in order to do that. But at this point, we're able to accommodate most of our accommodations without purchasing any additional right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Secretary. I believe the commissioners' questions and comments have all been addressed. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item for our work session today is the zoning rewrite update, and that's going to be done by Mr. Bob Baldwin.
Good afternoon, everyone. Certainly good to get back with the Planning Commission after having such a long, I think the last time we met was maybe February, if I'm correct about that, so it's been quite some time. It's been a very interesting and challenging time for us. One of the things we've been doing, hopefully it's showing a bit today, we've been working a little bit on these virtual meetings, trying to make sure we continue to conduct our public business. As I think you probably all are aware, we've got five boards and commissions through the, they're operated through the Planning Department. They don't all operate the same way with their boards and commissions. So we've been, you know, working through the challenges of all of that. And Planning Commission, obviously a critical board for us, and so we're certainly glad to have everyone together with us today. I'm going to give you a couple of brief updates, since it's been a while. And certainly, I think you can all appreciate the fact that under the current COVID-19 circumstances, it's been a bit of a challenge for us to move quite as quickly on some of these items as we might have done before. But we'll talk a little bit about where we are in the zoning rewrite process. That project, I think you recall, one of the last things we did, we put a draft version of the zoning ordinance up on the planning department webpage for taking in just general public comments as we were working along through that. Part of what we were doing, of course, is waiting for the General Assembly. One of the things we want to do is, you see what kind of changes, and I will say this year, you know, with a change in the General Assembly, we got some new things that came out of the General Assembly that we hadn't seen in previous years. And they were continuing to work on some of those bills all the way up until basically the end of April. And so we've been, you know, working through all of those things. So we have been working on the rewrite, we're probably, I'm going to call, I hate to put a percentage on it, but let's say we're 90, 95% done. Excuse me, the last major piece we're working on is, we're working with the Economic Development Department on the replacement for the M2, I mean, for the D2 Form-Based Code District. As you may recall, that's the one part of this project, the one area of the city in which a zoning map change is required to actually change the zoning ordinance. So this was originally a project initiated by council to, you know, rewrite, modify the zoning ordinance. But in dealing with getting rid of the Form-Based Code, we obviously have a we obviously have an additional task there, which is a zoning map update. And we'd started working on that. For those of you recall, working through the conference of plan, we worked with MDC on doing a master plan kind of for that district and looking at potential new base zone and we put under there. So we're still working, using that as our primary guide. And again, we're working with economic development and some ideas and suggestions we have for putting some together. And then the next step in that process will go back, as we did during the planning process, and reengage with the property owners out there in that area of the city and get their input, feedback, comments, concerns about where that is heading. So that's kind of the next big piece on that, on the agenda for that. But the rest of the zoning ordinance is coming along nicely. The bulk of it is in the hands of our consultants, who are working on formatting. And I think you may recall as well, we, to help us deal with our municipal costs, you know, we took a lot or taking a lot of the graphics and drawings out of the zoning ordinance, we're creating a separate users manual, so to speak. So they're working on that as well. So we're well underway on that, do not have a hard deadline. Hopefully within the next few weeks, though, we'll be able to post the updated draft again for any additional public comments as we move forward with that. So it's been quite a big undertaking. We found a lot more things in it than we thought we were going to have to tweak and get some consistency and to take on the task that city council started us with, which was to streamline, simplify, remove the form-based code. And up to this point, I think we're getting pretty far along with that. Hopefully within the next two to four weeks, we'll be able to post something out on our webpage. And then we're going to initiate some, one of the comments was raised the last time we did this. It was a, some people think the document is kind of large to not have any explanation as to what we were doing or what we had done. So we were going to put together some informational pieces on that to help explain sort of section by section, you know, what you're looking at, how the ordinance is structured, how it works. And hopefully it'll be a little bit more helpful for people who want to read through the document to see how it's put together, a little bit of help. The last time, we basically just want to get sort of unbiased comments, just put the document out there and let people who want to read it, read it. This time, we're going to do a little bit more instruction on that. So that's kind of where that is. And Mr. Chairman, if anybody has any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer any on that piece.
Mr. Wales needs to unmute his mic. You need to un-
muted again.
Muted it. You muted it again. Unmute your mic.
I'm doing that.
Okay, now.
Jimmy, you have to wait a little bit. After I hit it, it takes a little while to do that. Commissioners, Commissioner Williams, we're going to allow you that opportunity if you have any questions or comments, Mr. Baldwin. Commissioner Thompson?
I have no questions at this time.
Mr. Youngblood?
No questions now.
Commissioner G?
No questions.
Commissioner Coleman?
No questions at this time.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next presentation will be the casino process update, which is being done by Mr. Bob Baldwin.
Okay, and we'll cover this and probably even more briefly the last one. I think you're all aware of where the city has been moving along with this process on the casino. And we all recognize that historically with casinos not being a permitted use in the state, that the localities that had been selected by the state to be eligible for casinos don't have zoning to permit it. So we've initiated the process internally to determine how we want to do that. Of course, it's a little bit of an additional challenge for us because we're obviously working on the rest of the zoning ordinance simultaneously. So we're trying to figure out if these are going, you know, separate or integrated. Right now, we're working on creating for the casino zoning piece, something that would be separate. You know, we could in fact precede the rest of the zoning ordinance if need be. We don't have a hard date for, you know, processing it through. But we made very good progress, I believe, on getting the concept together. We have not briefed city council on it yet. That's another item we need to do. We are working with the city attorney's office, reviewing it to make sure we've got a solid legally standing zoning concept. It's a combination of modifying a base underlying district and creating an overlay. I think if you look at our existing zoning ordinance, you'll see we do have some provisions in there for overlay. We're using, I'll say, using that concept as a model for this. So we're working on getting that, you know, into some sort of a final shape. Eventually, we'll be working with the city manager's office and city council, as well as the planning commission, on determining, you know, what the schedule is going to be to move these things through the public hearing process. Again, we haven't done any briefing, so I'm not going to presuppose anything about schedule. Just want to let you know that we were aware of the fact that we needed to get the zoning ordinance ready to go in the event, you know, the city has a, you know, an affirmative action on the referendum. And assuming that the state lottery board approves the city to move forward with the casino project, we would obviously need to have the zoning in place for that as well. So that's pretty much where that is. Again, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on that. Again, don't have a timeframe, a hard deadline for you yet. But hopefully we'll be, you know, able to move on this thing relative short order.
Commissioners, this is Commissioner Williams. I have no questions or comments. Commissioner Thompson?
I do have a question. So when you say a base zoning and overlay maps, does that mean there will be certain areas in the city that will allow a casino? That'll be designated by that?
Right, so the concept would be, we'd create a category in the use table to allow casinos or casino gaming. So, you know, you'd go into a zoning district. And so if you did not have that zoning in place, you'd have to rezone to get to that. Then there's going to be an overlay district. For someone who's doing the casino, would have to rezone to create an overlay district. And that would then overlay on top of that base district. And then, as it was requested by city council back during their retreat, then the casino itself would need a use permit on top of that. So there's, you know, a number of steps in the process. So in theory, you know, we've created what we call an entertainment overlay district that with or without a casino, someone could try to rezone property in the city. But it would have a size requirement and it wouldn't be something you could do like an acre or, you know, a few acres of land. You need, you know, sizable parcel to do that. But it would be something, and I'll just say, in theory, could be applied more than just in one location.
Is there anything in all of that that will address the number of shops that have games in them? Like vaping stores and things like that? Is any of that going to be covered by this?
Well, what we're doing is a couple of things. Number one is the, for the uses within the casino itself, we're following what the general assembly approved. And that's not, you know, vape shop is different than these gray machines, as they call them. That's something that we'll be working through as part of our regular zoning ordinance process. You know, I think the general belief, going through the general assembly session last year, as they were being determined by the state to not be legal. And then the governor, you know, extended them, or extended the implementation of that bill for a year. So I think those machines like you might see in a 7-Eleven or vape shops or whatever, and I'm not saying they're all the same, but all those kind of machines like that that are, maybe they're gambling, maybe they're not, kind of a question. That gets resolved during the course of the next year. Within the casino, the type of uses that are allowed within the casino itself, that's been pretty much called out by the general assembly. They've got a pretty extensive list of definitions of those items. And we'll just say that that's, you know, would be contained within this primarily, I presume, if not completely, within this one casino structure.
Thank you.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baldwin, if I understand what you just told Commissioner Thompson, you would be creating a gaming area. And I think that what she was aiming at is what's to preclude small mini casinos from opening? I mean, I could see where somebody would say, I'm going to expand my vape shop and put in some slot machines too. And I happen to fall within this area that's been zoned a gaming area. What, how are we going to avoid a proliferation of small gaming shops scattered around the city?
Well, again, I go back to what I said before, you know, we'll have a base zoning district, but it will not be, you know, allowed across the city. There's only going to be one or two areas with this underlying zoning, the way it's being cobbled together at the current time. The entertainment overlay district, again, has a requirement for both the casino to be allowed as part of the overlay district, it also requires a use permit. So you wouldn't be able to just go anywhere else and just ask for a use permit to a casino. You'd have to both, you'd have to both be, you know, in a permitted zoning district, you'd have to be in an overlay district and you'd have to get a use permit. And so the way this is structured, there's really no way to do more than one.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to be able to reassure the public that we're not going to see a scattershot of mini mall casinos at every 7-Eleven in town. But thank you, sir.
Okay, welcome. Like I said, I think those other, a lot of those other machines will go away once the general assembly's bills take effect in 2021.
Commissioner G?
Yep, just a simple question. How long do we anticipate it taking us, once we get the green light that this needs to be done, to actually get all of the items passed or through the commissions and through the city council?
Well, you know, from the planning department's perspective, I can't really answer on the schedule of the developer. Of course, they're working through the Economic Development Authority, you know, as far as that goes. What we're trying to make sure we do is we get the zoning ready and the zoning can be in place. So that when somebody is ready to pull the trigger and proceed, and this is, you know, post referendum and post licensing approval, I presume, potentially from the state. I'm not sure exactly how that all fall out legally. We'll need legal guidance on that. We put all those things in place. And then like any other applicant we would have in the city, somebody wants to come in and rezone, somebody wants to get a use permit, they would be in that process. The only thing I would mention is a little different on this one. And we've had this happen over at the Seaboard Square property a couple of years ago. Because of the close proximity of this site to the interstate, right there, Victory Boulevard, there is a state requirement for VDOT to do a traffic impact analysis review. We typically refer to that as a 527 review. And the 527 study is part of the rezoning application. And that's driven by state code mandates. So the applicant can't initiate their rezoning until they've gotten that traffic impact study, which they are currently working on, until they have that done. That's a component, not the only component, but it's a component of their, will be their rezoning application. So that again depends on when they have that done, as to when they'd be ready to proceed. I know they, from what I hear from, you know, talking to their attorney on the zoning piece, they seem to be very motivated to move this thing along. But we don't really have a timeline, at least the planning department.
Commissioner Coleman? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner G, were you still talking?
No, no, sorry, apologies.
Okay. Commissioner Coleman?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our work session for today. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just for a point of clarity and for the record, Peter Youngblood, Commissioner Peter Youngblood did join the meeting after I called the road. I called the road. I just want to make that a part of the record.
I appreciate that. Commissioners, I will call each of you by name to see if there's any other further business that you'd like to discuss, and I have none. Commissioner Thompson?
I have none either.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Nothing, David.
Commissioner G?
Nothing major to add. Just happy to see all these bright smiling faces again.
Isn't that a plus? Commissioner Coleman?
No, but I did, I did just want to ask, on the agenda, it said that there was going to be a housing strategy item to be discussed. I just wanted to be clear about that.
Yeah, let me answer your question. You know, this, one of the studies, at least a preliminary, Brian Swett presented to city council a few months ago, is on this housing strategy. That project's moving along, but that's not done. The presentation, you know, isn't ready. And I think the process on that would be to present that to city council first and then bring that back to the planning commission. So that's probably going to be a little bit, a little bit out before that makes it to the planning commission.
Any additional questions, Commissioner Coleman?
No, sir, not at this time. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Baldwin, any further business we need to discuss?
Just very briefly, first of all, I want to thank everyone for your patience and your willingness to work with us in these virtual meetings and helping us as we had our planning department go through a pretty rigorous testing process to be able to do it. Don't know how long we're going to be virtual meetings. That's something we have to keep an eye on the governor. I'll just tell you, we are anticipating your next meeting in August will be virtual. You will have public hearing items on it. In fact, you're going to have a pretty hefty agenda for August. So just give you forewarned, be forewarned on that. But again, I'd like to thank you all for your patience on that. If you have any suggestions or thoughts or comments, help us do this better. Let us know. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Actually, I think this is going extremely well, but have been our first time. Are there any additional comments? Hearing done, this meeting is now adjourned.